Good evening, welcome to the June 12th, 2023 Berlin Board of Education meeting. It is 7:02 and we are going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are starting our meeting out this evening with a special presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent. This is a very special presentation this evening.
Thank you. As a Board of Education, we have the ability to give honorary diplomas. We have a gentleman with us this evening, John Sample, 99-year-old World Roll Tour veteran, who dropped out of school to serve his country in World War II. Tonight, we'd like to honor him with an honorary diploma from Berlin High School, which he never had a chance to achieve because he went to serve his country. John, on behalf of Berlin Public Schools as superintendent, I'd like to thank you for what you did for our country, and it's our pleasure to give you this honorary diploma. Thank you very much, sir.
All right, so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent again to go through the announcement of the Teacher and Paraprofessional of the 2024 school year.
At this time, I'd like to announce the Teacher of the Year. Please join me congratulating Alexandra Ivamey, Special Agent Teacher of the BLAST Program at Emma Hart Willard School as Berlin Teacher of the Year for 2024. Congratulations, Alex. At this meeting, we announce, and then Alex has multiple speaking engagements along the way, as well as a big paper to write for the state and a presentation to the entire staff, and she'll be at a board meeting in the fall. So let me just read a little about Alex to you. Alex has held multiple roles in the Berlin Public Schools since she was hired in March of 2016, and believes that each position she has worked and has shaped her beliefs towards teaching, including making sure every minute counts. She sincerely believes that every minute in school can be used to help a student progress towards a goal and meet with success. She knows that it is also important to immerse in fun and positivity into the mix as much as possible. Some learners need to be systematically taught steps of fundamental basic skills that come naturally to other students and are not even thought about. Beyond that, it is important to remember that each student comes with a different set of skills and strategies that works, for one does not always work for another. Because of that, there are different work groups always happening in her classroom. Alex plans for multiple paraprofessionals to deliver classroom instruction and credits them for students' growth. Together, Alex and her team continue to strive to make each minute meaningful for all students. As our 2024 Teacher of the Year, Alex will experience a unique opportunity. She'll have a chance to share her passion for teaching, her love of children, and the role she plays in her child's classroom on a daily basis. Congratulations to Alex. Next, I'd like to recognize our Paraprofessional of the Year. Please join me congratulating Nicole Sapko from Mary E. Griswold School as Berlin's Paraprofessional of the Year for 2024. Nicole has been a paraprofessional in the SNAP program at Griswold School for the past four years. Nicole is thoughtful, empathetic, passionate, and a caring paraprofessional. She is confident working with challenging students and appropriately following plans in order for the student to be successful. She thinks quickly, on her feet, and comes up with strategies that get the students moving in the right direction during challenging times. She is also comfortable with asking questions and seeking help or support when needed. She is quick to build relationships with all students and really gets a sense of who they are as a person and as a learner. She is comfortable working with classroom teachers and quickly understands the scope and sequence of units. She creates and modifies work on demand. She volunteers to go on field trips, no matter the grade, and also supports students outside of the regular school hours for afternoon adventures. Alexandra and Nicole will be honored at the Board of Education in November. Congratulations again to Nicole and Alex.
High school recognition. Michael, would you mind coming forward? It is my pleasure to introduce Berlin High School Valedictorian, Michael Lantary. Intelligent, self-motivated, and hard-working, these are just a few of the words used to describe Michael. From Advanced and Honors to AP and UConn ECE courses, Michael has challenged himself academically during his high school tenure. He has been named an AP Scholar with Distinction and a CAS Scholar Leader and has earned the RIT Computing Medal and Excellence in AP Computer Science Award. Michael achieved high honor status throughout his four years at Berlin High School. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Coding Club, is a House Leader in the UPBEAT Peer Leadership Program, and serves as a STEM Academy Tutor for Math and Computer Science. Michael is co-president of Tech Experts, a Director, Producer, and Newscaster on the Red Coat Rundown, our student-led news broadcast, and is a videographer with the Broadcast Club. Outside of school, Michael is also employed as an IT Assistant with the Berlin Public Schools. He plans to study Computer Science at the University of Connecticut Storrs in the fall. He did a wonderful job on Friday night with his speech, so congratulations, Michael. And although she was not able to be present tonight because she is currently out of her college orientation, I would like to recognize Laura Munch, Berlin High School's Saludatorium. Laura exemplifies teamwork, commitment, and dedication, not only to academics, but also for her extracurricular activities. She has taken advantage of extensive AP and UConn ECE course offerings and has earned numerous academic awards in a variety of courses, high honor status for all four years, and has received the Harvard Book Award. Laura's extracurricular activities include UPBEAT, the National Honor Society where she serves as Secretary, and Interact Club. She has been heavily involved with the Berlin High School Music and Theater Arts Department, including school musicals, fall plays, and the Madrigals Acapella Ensemble. She has volunteered her time as a math tutor and has mentored an elementary school student on a weekly basis. She also volunteers with the Bethlehem Fair annually. Laura has been employed as a camp counselor with Berlin Parks and Recreation over the past couple of summers, and she plans to study secondary education for chemistry at the University of Connecticut Storrs after high school. So congratulations to Laura Munch. Okay, next, I have the pleasure of presenting two students with the Cabe Student Leadership Awards. So Tamara Almazani and Julia Greenwood, do you mind coming forward, please? So first, we'll start with Tamara Almazani. Unique, creative, and intellectually curious are three adjectives to describe one amazing student. Tamara Almazani, Tamara moved to America in 2012 and began attending school with no understanding of English. Her resiliency in academic transcript are a true demonstration of the student and person that she is. Tamara has excelled in a rigorous academic program, including AP and UConn Early College Experience courses. Her academic success has been recognized through a multitude of honors and awards. With a future career goal in the medical field, Tamara has taken full advantage of many opportunities, including volunteering at the Hospital for Special Care on weekends. During her junior year, she approached her AP UConn ECE Chemistry Teacher about potential research opportunities, which resulted in a one-of-a-kind experience participating in the anti-malarial drug research project with a UConn professor. She is a member of the National Honor Society and is President of the Roche-Cappa Social Studies Honor Society. She is a leader of the Medical Club and is on the Varsity Tennis and Indoor Track and Field Teams. She is a Hospital House Leader in UPBEAT, an Officer in the Environmentalism Club and Habitat for Humanity, and a member of Youth and Government Club Debate Team, Rotary Interact Club, Random Acts of Kindness Club, American Sign Language Club, Unity Club, Social Justice and Equity Committee Unified Theater and Horticulture Club. Tamara plans to attend Pomona College in California, where she will study Neuroscience and Psychology. Congratulations. Next, we want to recognize Julia Greenwood. Julia has been an integral part of Berlin's academic and extracurricular community and has proven herself to be a leader both in and out of the classroom. Throughout high school, she has taken on academic challenges. She takes initiative and has a strong motivation to master the content. This strong work ethic has earned her an invitation into the National Honor Society, as well as a number of awards. She has earned the Seal of Body Literacy in Spanish. Julia is involved in many extracurriculars, including being a multi-year class officer. The one that has meant the most to her is participating in the Unified Sports and Unified Theater Programs. She mentors students with disabilities so that they may participate in activities that they might otherwise not have had the chance to. She is also a member of UPBEAT, where as a member of Willard House, she mentors elementary school students, and Hospital House, where she volunteers at a local hospital. This provides her with an opportunity to get a taste for what she would like to do in her future, to become a physician's assistant. Julia is also a peer tutor in our Writing Center, assisting others to perfect their writing. She will attend Springfield College in the Direct Entry Physician Assistant Program to earn a bachelor's degree in Health Sciences and matriculate into the Graduate Physician Assistant Program to earn her master's degree. Congratulations, Julia.
At this time, could I have McGee Principal Sellers will come forward? All right, good evening. I'd like to have Grace Alger and Yahir Gonzalez Ramos up to the podium, please. All right, so these are two young folks that we're going to recognize for the Cabe Award as well. We'll start with Grace. Grace lives with her mom, dad, and brother Andrew, who just completed Grade Five at Griswold School. She also lives with her two dogs, Finn and Gus. Grace excels both academically and athletically. Her favorite subject is math and enjoyed being in McGee's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Pandolfi's class this year. She's participated in the Art Alliance Club, cross-country, track, and is a competitive swimmer. In the classroom, Grace is a leader among her peers as she models focus, diligence, and perseverance in her academic endeavors. In addition, Grace demonstrates empathy toward her peers and is willing to work with everyone as she is kind, patient, and open-minded. Grace is a model student when working independently. She follows all directions and exceeds assignment expectations, even when the task is challenging. Although well-liked by her peers, Grace excels at avoiding social distractions that would take away from her ability to make good use of her class time. Good job, Grace. Grace also takes advantage of any opportunities for extended learning to develop a deeper understanding of content and skills. When encountering difficulties, she advocates for herself and interacts with her teachers and other adults with respect and maturity. Grace's teachers can count on her to assist them with tasks, to act diplomatically in the face of conflict, and to honor her commitments. She's a calming influence on her friends and peers, and her kind nature makes her well-respected and liked by everyone she encounters. These qualities will serve her well as she aspires to work as an architect or graphic designer. These qualities also serve her well right now as we are proud to recognize her as a recipient of the Cabe Award. Congratulations, Grace Alger. And Yahir. Yahir lives with his mom, dad, brothers, who are soon-to-be Berlin High School Junior Christian and soon-to-be McGee eighth grader Romeo and his sister Tiana. His dog, Poogie, is also part of the family. Yahir puts forth best effort every day, especially in his favorite class, which is math, also taught by Mrs. Pandolfi. Whether he's pitching in at home, doing chores like laundry and cleaning his room to help his hard-working family, or studying, he perseveres. No matter the task difficulty level, he works both independently to persist or advocates for himself to ensure he gets the most out of the experience. He is determined to succeed in everything he puts his mind to as he frequently reaches out to staff for help, both in person and through email. Yahir is truly a role model for his fellow classmates, excuse me. Students report that Yahir is extremely kind to everyone and has an incredible gift of humor. They also report that Yahir encourages peers to do well by making competitions out of learning. "It's fun being in class with Yahir," stated one student. Throughout his time at McGee, Yahir has sought opportunities to create additional gaming clubs for students to enjoy. He's one of the most respectful, kind students to walk through the doors at school. It's evident he cares about the McGee community, his education, and is a joy to be around for both students and staff. These qualities will benefit him as he works toward opening his own Mexican restaurant someday. Congratulations to a solid young man who is undoubtedly a deserving winner of the Cabe Award. Congratulations, Yahir.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is thank you to our student board reps. If Ian and Sam would like to come on down. So for those of you who don't know, this is Ian and this is Sam, and they are wonderful members of the board as our student board reps. You both, this year, I feel like have taken this role to the next level. As long as I've served on the board, we haven't always had student board reps. I think we added them four or five years ago. And this role has continued to develop and evolve. And you guys have had the opportunities to leave early at some meetings, and you've chosen to stay. You're dedicated, you follow along, you contribute, and it's really important to the board members. You guys give us insight of what's happening in the schools, and you've found creative ways to do so. I think a lot of us say some of our favorite points in the meeting are your reports, and we just love how you guys take that on and have worked together. You guys bring a lot to the board, and your roles are invaluable. So thank you so much. Anyone on the board, would you guys like to contribute any words before we give them their presence in a round of applause?
Said, spoke the words appropriately today about how we feel about how they did this year. They really have taken it to another level regarding their reports. But more so than the reports, were the insight into topics that we were discussing. We really appreciate the fact that you brought a student perspective, which was really the goal of bringing student representation onto the board. So thank you both very much.
Jamie.
That, first, Sam, congratulations on graduating. And then the very next day, I saw you at the soccer game, and I'm like, did she even sleep yet? So that's fantastic. It just shows really how you were all year. Just go-getter, completely busy. I don't even know how you function half the time with as busy as you are. You guys were both phenomenal. Ian, you have great things coming next year. One of the most organized people right here. It's just unbelievable, both of you. Again, we've had several years where we've had the student representation, but with your reports, it was insightful. We really, you know, we're not always, especially, not all of us are in the schools. So for you guys to actually let us know thoughts, feelings, opinions, we haven't necessarily always gotten that throughout the years. So it just has really, like Julie said, has moved it to the next level. So we're going to miss you. We can't wait to see you next year again. Congratulations to both of you, and good luck in your future, Sam.
Anyone else? All right, well, let's give them a big round of applause. Here is your present, and here is yours. You're welcome, and thank you again, Sam and Ian. Okay, so we are moving on to the report of our student board reps. So we're going to turn it over to Ian and Sam.
Talking about graduation on Friday, my class passed the week, we had our formal graduation ceremony. And despite the rain, thunder, lightning, the pause that happened in the middle of our class president's speech, we felt that it went really well, and it was kind of like the perfect ending to our classes four years at BHS. We would like to give a special recognition to the band, the chorus, and the broadcasting team, and the janitorial staff at BHS for helping make the graduation a success and for quickly drying off the stage and all the chairs. And on behalf of the Class 2023, we would like to thank all of the board members and all staff at Berlin Public Schools for all the hard work you guys do and all of the hard work you've put into the students so that we all graduated.
And then hosted by the Berlin UPBEAT Program, the first time this year, the Class of 2023, there are students hosted an elementary walkthrough of all the graduates. This actually occurred in the last week of school. And graduates not only had the ability to see the future of Berlin Public Schools, but also were able to visit their past teachers. In fact, donations can be made to UPBEAT through the BHS website. On Thursday, June 8, students across the district left school for the final time this year. Many incoming grade levels are very excited to see what the new year holds, especially for my class, because it will be our final year in the Berlin Public School system.
And finally, we just wanted to give a big thank you to Ms. Eustace and for all she's done for us. I really appreciate having her as a principal. You know, she was always there if you needed her, always willing to have a meeting with you to talk things through. And I'm just beyond grateful to have had you as a principal and best of luck wherever you end up and whatever you're doing. And then quickly, I'd just like to say thank you all for the last two years. I've really appreciated everything that, and all the opportunities I've gotten to do while serving on the board. It's given me opportunities to look at things that I never would have seen and to really, and I found new things to be grateful for that I never would have known that you guys were behind and just, it's really opened my eyes to a bunch of new things. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for today.
That's it? It's the last day of school? All right, thank you for your report. And again, Sam, best of luck to you as you move off to college. So, all right, we are going to be going through the other committee reports. Do we have any committees that would like to report out? I know that the Community Engagement Committee did not meet.
Yeah, we had to cancel it, so we're going to schedule it again.
Okay, and then the Student Achievement, not Student, Curriculum? So old, okay, from seven years ago. And now I'll turn it over to Matt for the FNO Committee. I know it's an agenda item, but you can just give the report.
Thanks. So the Finance and Operations Committee met on June 1st. We had three major topics to discuss. The first is the school lunch pricing for the coming year and the anticipated changes. With that, we will discuss that later on this evening, further in the agenda. We also got an update on the end-of-the-year funds and were outlined by the Director of Finance, wherever she is, there she is over there, about what the anticipated plans are. And it's, without going into all the details, it's, I believe it's in our reports that we receive, we're going to end the year just fine. And then lastly, we talked about a couple of the projects, both the project for the outdoor classroom and also Biscoglio Field, and how we are going to finish up those projects, which, again, those are continuously moving targets with some things. I think that Brian's going to talk to us a little bit later about Biscoglio Field, but pretty much it was just kind of business as usual and kind of getting an update.
Thank you. And correspondence to the board.
No correspondence to the board this evening.
All right, and then I just have another update. On Tuesday, May 9, Tracy and I attended a collective bargaining workshop that was put on by Cabe, and we were hoping to hear about upcoming trends with union negotiations as, you know, our contracts come due. But I know for me, I learned just a lot about collective bargaining in general, how benefits can be used at the bargaining table, and then, what was the other part that we?
About working with the town, working with, we have to have representative.
Yep, so we just learned a lot about the ins and outs. I, you know, we typically engage in, but I felt like for me, it filled in a lot of the gaps. I found it really beneficial. The speakers were excellent, so I just wanted to report out on that. Do you have anything else you want to share about that?
I agree with Julia. We have opportunities to do various educational seminars and classes and stuff, being on the board, just to kind of help us better to serve you guys and everyone. And this is one we chose to do because it has to do with budget and negotiations. And it was really good. I mean, some of the stuff you already know, but it's always good to go to those things, and we both really enjoyed it. We walked away going, wow, this is really good. And we usually do when we go to them anyway. But it was very beneficial. And we've got some notes that I think is going to help us in the next year or so as we go through some more negotiations to kind of fine-tune them.
All right, thank you. Now, we are going to move on to Audience to Citizen. If you would like to approach the board, come up to the microphone. It's for residents speaking during this portion of the meeting. You'll be limited to three minutes. Just state your name and your address. Oh, I think it has to be on for the camera, for the live stream. Would you like my microphone?
Just really quick, because I saw this up there. I just want to offer a word of thanks as a community member and probably on behalf of the teachers and the administrators. That event, having the seniors return back to their elementary schools, was one of the most impactful events of the year. I don't think the seniors understand what it means to the teachers from the elementary schools, who it may have been a number of years, to see their connection to what happens at the end, to have these kids come back. So to UPBEAT, the High School Superintendent, the Board, thank you so much for putting that in place. It's something that should remain in place because it is one of the most special events of the year that we experienced this year, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to approach the board?
Hello, Aurora Courtville, 19 Timberwood Road. I just wanted to say.
Can you just say your address, sorry?
Yep, I did, 19 Timberwood Road.
Thank you.
Okay, get it, okay. I just wanted to say I thought you guys, I think you guys did a great job this year. Good job on the budget. You guys are doing great. Keep up the good work. Yay, yay.
Thank you, Aurora. Anyone else? All right, moving on to an agenda item regarding personnel. I will turn it over to our superintendent.
At this time, Principal Eileen Eustace has submitted her letter of resignation to be effective at the close of the day on June 30, 2023, after serving as the Berlin High School Principal for five years. Eileen has accepted a central office position as Director of Secondary Education with the West Hartford Public Schools. Want to wish Eileen great success, as I know she will be, and thank her for everything she's done for Berlin Public Schools and the Principal of Berlin High School. You will be missed, Eileen, and we definitely appreciate you being here. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for consideration?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Eileen Eustace effective at the close of June 30, 2023, and to thank her for her five years of service that she has provided to the district and to wish her well in her new position as Director of Secondary Education with the West Hartford Public Schools.
Do we have a second? It's a motion by Adam, second by Carrie. So now we can open it up for discussion. I'd like to start out by thanking you and wishing you the best of luck. We're excited for you, but it's also bittersweet. And thank you for all that you've done for Berlin Public Schools and, you know, my time on the board. We brought you in and we, you know, it's been really great being able to work with you, so thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say a few things, too. I had the honor of working with Eileen over the past five years, and it was very challenging years. We had COVID. We had COVID and some other issues that arose. Eileen, for being a high school principal, is not the easiest to undertake. You have a lot of students, you have a lot of staff, families that you deal with. Eileen, for me, was one of the most approachable, engaging principals that we've had the privilege of having. Kind, open, honest, willing to listen. She did the virtual coffee hours, which were fantastic for families. The kids knew who she was. She was able to know their names, which sometimes we don't have the luxury of all of our principals, especially at a high school level, knowing everyone's names. Really encouraged the kids to get involved. I'm also a parent of two high school students and couldn't be more proud to have my children be in the high school when she was there as the principal. So we will miss you, we wish you luck. Thank you so much, and we hope to see you and have you come back and visit.
Thank you, Jamie. Adam?
I commented, I, to Eileen when we walked in, the first time I ever met you was my, my daughter's freshman orientation, however many years ago that was, five years ago. And you were, you were hired late in the process, and I think it was probably one of the first things, or one of the first things you had done officially. And I was very impressed with how calm and with ease that you, you controlled and commanded the auditorium with parents who were nervous, especially with our first child at the time being in the high school. And just did an excellent job. And I remember thinking then, wow, Eileen was the right choice for, for us, and, and, and we appreciate it. I think you elevated the, the status of Berlin High School to where it was, to where it is now, and we have you to thank for that. And, you know, it's, it's bittersweet because we hate to see good people go, but you've left us in a wonderful position right now, and Berlin is certainly on the rise. We want to, I want to thank you from my family and the board as well. You've been very kind and generous and welcoming to all of us, and, and we appreciate everything that you did over the last five years. Thank you.
Eileen, I said to you earlier, I'm sad for us, but happy for you. I think your next adventure is one that you've chosen carefully or that has chosen you, so I wish you well. One thing I just want to reflect in addition to echoing all of the things that folks have said before is that it's always remarkable to me when you see a highly skilled leader lead with humility, and I think that's what you do. So thank you for that.
In the cafeteria, Eileen, I wish that I had gotten to know you longer. You know, I've just kind of started to get to know all the players and who everyone is. And, but my first impression of you was you're a very passionate individual. You have a lot of vigor and incredible leadership ability, so I know you're going to just be awesome in West Hartford, so I wish you a lot of luck. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Eileen? You know, you know the process we went through to get you here. We were so happy when we were finally, when we were able to select you and bring you to Berlin. It was absolutely the right move for the board at that time. I hope you feel it was the right move for you still. You have changed Berlin High School. You did exactly what, you were exactly what we needed and when we needed it. So thank you for all you've done, and we wish you the very best over in West Hartford.
You formed some amazing relationships with our students, and that's like the number one thing about you when I think about you is, is you got very personal with them. Like they, they knew you, you knew every single one of them, like what Jamie had said. And you had the very difficult few years, I think all principals that have gone through and all the districts of all these last few years is probably the hardest one in history that people are going to have to go through. And you handled it like a boss, and you were amazing. So thank you so much, and you are going to be greatly missed, but wish you the best of luck in your new adventure.
Right, hearing no one else. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the vote carries nine zero. Moving on to the next item, the anticipated appointment of Berlin High School Principal. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent to talk a little bit about this before we put a motion out.
We are very fortunate to have an assistant principal that's been a member of the Berlin staff, actually a student in Berlin for a number of years, working with Eileen for the last three years. Her name is Katie Amenta, who's with us here this evening. Katie has done an outstanding job in all capacities as an English teacher here at the high school, as a soccer coach, as an assistant principal. So it's often great to have a phenomenal principal as we have with Eileen, but to have Eileen's assistant to ready to step in with Eileen's full endorsement, it's exceptional to have that person here. So my recommendation is that we would look to appoint Katie Amenta as the next Berlin High School Principal.
Do we have a motion for consideration?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education appoint Katie Amenta to the position of Berlin, of principal of Berlin High School effective July 1, 2023.
Do we have a second? Second, so motion by Adam, second by Matt. Now we can open it up for discussion. So this came quick, and, you know, we could have taken two routes to post it and go through the process. You post it for two weeks and then you have to form the committee. The committee dates meet, so on and so forth. And the superintendent is able to bring someone to the board and the board could vote, and that's how it can go. And, you know, I think it's important to show that in Berlin, we do develop from within and we value our people. And, you know, when this was initially presented to me, I, it seemed to me like, you know, Katie has worked really hard. You know, I, I have a lot of respect for Katie, just from my role on the board, and I know a number of, you know, all the other board members do as well. Does anyone else want to add anything?
Yep. We are in a unique situation where you have somebody who was a, a student, who was a teacher, championship coach, teacher of the year, administrator. And as Brian mentioned, it's very difficult to see Eileen leave, but to have somebody of Katie's caliber to be able to step in and fill that role, it was, there was no doubt in my mind, and I think on behalf of the board, I don't think anyone had a doubt. She's the, the perfect candidate for the position. She's had a great role model over the years. She is a known entity within our school district. She has an excellent rapport with students, with teachers, with administrators. She is exactly the type of person, though Eileen leaves, of big shoes to fill. Katie's ready to step right in, and I couldn't be happier for her, and I couldn't be happier for, for us as a town and as a district, so.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else?
I would want Katie in my corner if there was ever a crisis. She's very calm and not quick to temper, and she's got everything that it takes to be a leader. And I've seen her grow in many different ways and, and have several different challenges. And she's, she's a warrior and she takes what's given her with, with dignity, and she's going to be great. So I'm, I'm really honored to be able to be here to advocate for her, so.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board?
Katie, you're, for me, the obvious choice, but I also want to say, dittoing what Adam said, but you have a fantastic staff that work with you. Brian is a phenomenal assistant principal, so whoever you guys choose, we choose for the next assistant principal, the three of you will be phenomenal. Tough shoes to fill since Eileen is leaving, but not a problem. We are 100% behind you no matter what. You're going to do fantastic. Brian, you as well. I really look forward to what the next years bring us, so congratulations, way to go. This is exciting for all of us.
Thank you. And, and just to clarify, after tonight's meeting, the job will be posted and a committee will be formed and it will go through the process set forward by the Board of Education. It'll be posted for two weeks and then the committee will bring in candidates. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I also want to say that before we came here tonight, we all met with Katie. We actually threw her some pretty tough questions and she responded really well to them. Does anyone else have anything to add before we move to a vote? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nine zero. Okay, so right, congratulations. All right, so we've had a lot of big things. So I'm going to just ask the board if you guys will just stay here for a minute or two, but if anyone in the audience wants to go home while we continue our agenda, just take the next minute or so. To do that, I know a lot of people are here, for students, faculty, staff, so you guys can just take a moment, and we're not going to officially recess, but we'll just give you a minute to. Going to continue on with our agenda, just keep moving through because we do have a pretty long meeting tonight. Okay, well, because we have executive session at the end. So do we have a motion for consideration for our consent agenda?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? So the motion by Adam, the second by Carrie, she beat you to it. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The vote is nine zero. Moving on to new business, I'll turn this over to the superintendent. This is Berlin, Berlin Visiting Nurse Association Service Agreement with the Board of Ed.
As the board is aware of, our nursing, school nurses are part of the Visiting Nurse Association, and so each year we have to approve our contract with the Visiting Nurse Association, and that's what you're doing this evening.
All right, so before we open it up for discussion, do we have a motion for consideration?
I'll move to approve the agreement between the Berlin Board of Education and the Berlin Visiting Nurse Association for 2023, 2024.
Do we have a second? So the motion by Carrie, the second by Gina. Any discussion?
Just a question. Is anything changed in the agreement as compared to other years?
No, it's not. No, nothing has changed in the agreement. The only difference is, you know, their, their budget is different than what it's been in the past. So there potentially could be, there, there, as of two weeks ago, we were going to lose a health aid. Due to budget, budget reductions, they did find some money, so that health aid is remaining.
Anything else? Okay, we can, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nine zero. Now we are moving on to a report for the FAFSA completion rate for Berlin High School.
Yes, this is a new requirement that we are to report on.
The purpose of reporting on, Lori's going to share with you, our curriculum director, Lori Drippen, will share with you, our completion rate as required to prepare. Lori?
Thank you. So the FAFSA is the federal grant, so the application for the federal student aid. And so we want to encourage everyone to apply for that grant. And this year, actually, at the high school, they, the counseling department took this on as a goal to really increase. Last year, the class of 22 completion rate was 46%, and you can see that that increased to almost 79%. And they did a lot of different things, so the, it opens around October 1st for people to start applying for the grant, and beginning December 15th, they called all families who didn't apply for the, the grant, and they went ahead and did all of that. And they were able to get 62 families through their phone calls to apply for FAFSA. And then they also held a FAFSA night. There were 11 people in attendance of those. 10 were able to complete the application. One didn't, but it's only because the person inputted their social security number incorrectly, so they're fixing that, and then, so now we'll be there. They have until June 30th to make that correction. The state wanted us to also report adult ed information. When I reached out to the state this spring, they said that that is not something that we need to complete. We have one GED person. An adult ed.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Why, why are we, why is the state want, what is the, the reasoning behind this?
So last year, they passed legislation to make sure that, I think they are feeling that only certain people apply for FAFSA, and they want to make sure that we reach out to everyone. And so our goal in Berlin was to reach out to everyone.
And certainly a huge increase from.
It was a huge increase, so credit to the counseling department for really taking that on and doing a nice job pulling it up.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Lori before she leaves? Well, thank you for reporting out on that. That is a huge increase, so they did a great job achieving their goal or exceeding. I'm not sure what their goal was set at, but that's pretty impressive. Okay, we are moving on to school lunch pricing. I'm going to turn this over to Ashley Darcy. Okay.
Hello. So every year, we have to go over what our school lunch prices are going to be. It's typically set around this time of year to give time for us to prepare our communications to families and to adjust anything that we need to in our point of purchase systems. So so this page is just basically historical pricing. As you can see, we haven't had a price increase in school lunches since 2017, 2018 school year. We did have the free lunch program in 2020, 21, 2022, and kind of a hybrid of free and, uh, free lunch pricing for the current school year. We did have two year, uh, two months, rather, of paid programming lunch for this school year. So this is just to give you kind of a snapshot of what we're looking at. So an overview of basic operations. So I gave you a history from 18, 19 through 21, 22, or full year operations, and then our projected 22, 23 school year operations. The numbers that we have here are to, from April is the last set of data that we had when I was preparing this presentation. We hadn't yet closed May. So as you can see, our income in 2021 increased through 21, 22, and our grant revenue is really the reason why our income has decreased or is projected to decrease in the current year. And then, of course, the expenses are tracking upwards. Main driver is, next one, our main driver is basically the food and salary cost. Food costs, we're seeing that in our own homes. So this is just the expenses by component, where our main drivers is our food and our salaries. And then, so for the, our proposal for 23, 24 is to increase an average by 8.15% between breakfast and lunch pricing. So it'd be for breakfast at both the middle and high school, 15 cent increase for a seven and a half percent, and a 10% increase for school breakfast or six, 6.45%. And then school lunch pricing at the middle and high school, an increase of 30 cents per lunch, and at all elementary schools, an increase of 25 cents per lunch. And then adult pricing, that's kind of driven by what we're, what we charge our students. And last year, we got a notification from the state saying that we were not charging enough for our adult lunches, so we were presenting a 16.67% increase for adult breakfasts, and then 11.11% for the adult lunch, which is 50 cents on both breakfast and lunch for adults. And that's it.
Do we have a motion for consideration? You can just stay up there in case people have questions, but do we have a motion?
I'll move to increase breakfast and lunch prices for the 2023, 2024 school years follows. Breakfast from B, at Berlin High School from $2 to $2.15. McGee from $2 to $2.15. Elementary schools from $1.55 to $1.65. Adult breakfast from $3 to $3.50. Lunch at BHS from $3.40 to $3.70. McGee from $3.10 to $3.40. Elementary schools from $2.80 to $3.05, and adult lunches from $4.50 to $5.
Do we have a second? Uh, so motion by Adam, second by Matt, is that correct? Okay. Now we can open it up for discussion, and Ashley's up there if there's questions.
Sure. For the free meals that were provided during the last two years, was the money received from the government, did it not meet the actual expense of? was the money received from the government, did it not meet the actual expense of food and supplies and things of that nature? Was it less than?
No, the federal reimbursement that we receive for free and reduced students, there's a surplus in the cafeteria. But as we are, as we continue to move to paid programming, as of right now, there's no discussion that there will be free and reduce, or free lunches for all students in the next coming school year. We're going to, that surplus is going to dwindle down. So in order to cover our operating, our anticipated operating expenses for next year, we would need to have this increase go into effect.
Thanks, Ashley.
Any other questions or comments?
Just curious, will the lunches change at all with the price increase?
So we are working with our food service director to become a little bit more innovative in what we're serving students based on just their interest in general. So we, actually Jeff and I have been working together with Wendy Rollings to come up with some more creative things on the menu. We're doing some food tastings and just things to pique people's interest. Because, you know, when you eat the same things over and over again, eventually you don't want to buy nachos on Tuesday anymore, so. And our goal is to make sure that we have the highest percentage of students participating in the lunch program because that's how the cafeteria makes its money. So yes, we are working on that. If you have any suggestions, we'll take it.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the vote is nine zero. So now we are going to set the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Board of Education budget. Turn it over to the superintendent.
I want to ask Ashley to stay at the podium.
And share a chart that represents the budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And just to clarify to the board, so after Ashley presents them, we're going to do a motion, then we can open it up for discussion.
So the town council approved the budget for the Board of Education, the amount of fifty million dollars, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand and seventy-one. And that is an increase of about three point six one percent. So some of the things that we made, the adjustments that we made in order to get to this number was reallocating some grant funds by not offering summer programming. Using other funding sources. So our food service director, for example, she is going to be certified at the end of the school, at the end of the summer, rather. So her first salary, what we originally were budgeting, partial was in the general fund. We were very fortunate that she's completing her program. We can move that into the food service fund. We had a rate adjustment for our insurance that came in after our Board of Ed budget adoption and even through the town council or through the Board of Finance process. So we're saving significantly there, moving from a ten percent increase that was originally budgeted to an eight and a half percent increase. We're moving some things to the surplus, to the enterprise fund, rather. You heard about athletics and BHS graduation. And then, end of year funds will be covering some expenses that are, some projects that we had originally put into the budget. And then, as far as cuts, fortunately, we are in a position where we didn't have to do anything that wasn't already put on or discussed prior. So our BHS retirement will not be filled. The math resignation will not be filled. The custodian resignation will not be filled. And then all of their associated benefits. So without, in addition to the alternative funding sources, I'd say we're in a good spot for next year. And if Brian, if you want to add anything else?
Yes, I just want to make sure everyone realizes that the positions that will be funded based on the three point six percent increase, as well as, as Ashley shared about, additional resources that have been, come available with the various items that she shared, as well as the insurance, which changed from ten percent. The positions that will be back in, the in-school suspension supervisors at the middle school and high school will be back in the, back next year. Student management para, that's the individual sits in the front, from the high school. Paraprofessional and special education will be back. Building substitutes will be, will remain in each school with the reduction of one sub at one building. K paraprofessionals, which are shared paraprofessionals amongst two classrooms, will be back in the budget. Elementary reading paraprofessional, elementary and secondary math paraprofessionals, and secondary reading intervention. Those positions will be back in the budget with the reallocation of funds. I think it's important to note that we have used all of our ARP-ESR funds that will expire at the end of this year. We are using all of those funds to fund these positions. The things that we had those allocated for, such as summer program and and other, other programming that we plan to do throughout the year, next year, as well as anything in the summer, we've taken all those funds and reallocated them, which really what it does, because they won't be there next year, it puts us at a deficit to start next year's budget. Because in order to fund those positions, those funds we know are not available. And those funds are over half a percentage point to start the budget cycle. But we did feel it's imperative to save as many positions as possible, and for that reason, we did what we did.
All right, do we have a motion for consideration?
Move that the Board of Education adopt an operating budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year in the amount of fifty million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, seventy-one dollars, as set by the town council.
Do we have a second? Motion by Adam, second by Matt, now we can open up for discussion. I do know that it's been a topic of discussion about the K membership. And we said we were going to have that as a discussion on our, this agenda. We were, we are going to be funding that with end of year funds, correct? So that's just an error on here. And then when we get to the item F on our agenda, the retreat, we're going to just be discussing the items that are going to be covered in that. That's going to be discussing, you know, going through this process for, you know, the next year until next budget year to determine its effectiveness and purpose. So we're going to be getting to that, but that is going through end of year funds. And that was also discussed in the FNO committee meeting. Are there any other comments or questions here?
I'll just say that, you know, obviously, when budget process begins, it's, it's difficult taking a look at reductions and cuts. Thankful that with some savings, some reallocation of funds, some end of year funds, we're able to maintain the staffing levels. You know, I am concerned when you have a retirement that's not filled. That's a position that's going to be very difficult to get back in the future. But given the current budget and everything that's in there, I am pleased that there are no layoffs and we're able to maintain the current staff level. But I will just, again, like I've said before, I do get concerned when we have retirement and that position is not filled and we just don't fill it. Because once you lose it, it's very difficult to get it back.
Yes, that's correct. Anyone else? I do just want to thank everyone for how hard you all worked this budget season. Though there was criticism out in the public, I am, you know, confident to stand by. Everyone did work really hard. Everyone committed above and beyond, giving extra time to extra meetings, to longer discussions, to going through this on your own and following up, attending extra committee meetings. And, you know, it wasn't necessarily the easiest of budget seasons. We did not get what we asked for. However, we did get the highest percent we've received in, what, fifteen, twenty years increase?
That's the highest percent I recall.
Yes.
So, you know, you know, it's not what we asked for. However, this is allowing us to do a lot more. And I can't say that we wouldn't have gotten to this point without the collective board and all the work that everyone has put in, including Brian and his team.
I just want to take a moment to thank, I know that some individuals in the audience, but the parent group, my parent advisory group over the last years has been instrumental in getting the word out and promoting the budget and contacting individuals and staying, attending meetings. And, you know, even though we didn't get the number we wanted, it is a better place than we've been. And I hope that the decisions we're making represent that. So thank you for all your work and time.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add, Gina?
It's for us as parents or citizens that live in this town, for the second referendum, those that went out and voted. And, you know, sometimes your voices aren't heard and that can be frustrating. So I know for some of us, that is frustrating for the town individuals who did vote and said that the Board of Ed was still too low and that did not change. But I do appreciate those that went out to vote, to especially our parent groups who really fought for those changes. It's the best for our kids, our staff. So even though it's frustrating, I appreciate those that did go out. And, you know, you just want to make sure that your voices are heard in the future, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so yes, it was a collective effort, so thank you all, those that, you know, rallied and advocated. Okay, so we have our motion. We can move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Vote Harry's nine, zero. So moving on to the next item, this was something I wanted us to add after our, oh, thank you, Ashley, sorry. You could have just stayed up there. You can stay up there if you'd like to be part of this discussion, you might have something to add. So the board, we're going to discuss the feasibility of providing pre-K transportation for all students for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. I know it can be difficult when someone approaches the board with a concern during our public comment section of our meeting. And we do not discuss that because that's not part of our protocol. And then I just wanted to be cognizant of us cycling back to that. So a gentleman approached us about providing transportation for pre-K. For, so our special educations are students receive the transportation, but then the peer model students do not. You know, I could turn this over to the superintendent to share a little bit more about it, but I just wanted to see if the board wanted to weigh in, so if there was any future action.
At this time, as you said, we do not provide transportation except for parole model students in our pre-K program. To do that would be a whole nother layer of transportation. It's not as though, even though it's provided to some students, in looking at that and mapping which buses would go where, there would be additional costs incurred for that. So what the exact number, to have NBT run that number, we, you know, it would be considerable, and I mean considerable, for transportation to and from school. I know the individual came to speak, talked about it, even if it was just midday transportation to like preschool centers, there's the additional cost for that, you know, there'd be more buses that need to be put on. And what those exact costs would be, we didn't calculate the exact cost. But obviously, if additional buses were put on, the cost per day per bus is well over a hundred dollars for that bus to run the route, even one way.
Yeah, and I just think at this point, we're struggling to fund the things that are currently in our operating budget. But I think it's important for the board to weigh in. Does anyone have something they'd like to share?
Time, so understanding is the need for the transportation because the children, I mean, obviously, I know they need a ride, but is it that the parents, obviously, are working and they can't get the kids from A to B? Is that what the issue is primarily? I'm just trying to understand.
Let me explain, so our preschool program is for students of need. So they qualify for preschool, then we look for role model students to attend. The students that are eligible for preschool, we do provide transportation because legally we're mandated to. If a student is a role model student, we don't provide transportation for other students. So I can ask Solian, how many role model students would you estimate? I, I, I'm guessing close to forty, forty students. So if the students were going to similar proximity as the other students, but some of the students that attend preschool, they're not on a van, they're not on a van, they're not on a bus, it becomes a whole logistical issue to contract with NBT for that transportation. And what the gentleman that came said was, the tough part is preschool is half day. So if you're working, dropping off in the morning is often doable. I think he was asking for both, but the midday pickup or the midday drop off is difficult. So he was asking if the transportation could be inclusive for all students to attend preschool. And I just don't know, based on our, the budget, is that something that the board wants to entertain? Which is definitely going to be an additional cost.
So probably a harsh opinion, I was able to participate in both aspects of the preschool. So special, children who receive special or any kind of services are required by law to take the van or, you know, transportation to and from the school. And children who are peer models, my understanding would probably, if this ever happened, would have to take a bus because I would assume some of our children have needs that cannot maybe be around other children in the van or whatnot, or not enough room and whatnot. So then it would be bus. This town is amazing because we have this opportunity. And I actually, one of my children was also a peer model and hands down was the best preschool around. And people at that time, parents like begged to get into our preschool system. It also doesn't cost anything, correct? It didn't win I win, or not I win, but my kids. So therefore, other preschools that are different programs, they cost money, correct?
Absolutely.
So we offer it for free for peer models. I just don't know that with our budget season, it would be ideal to then offer transportation when you could go somewhere else for a full day if you need to.
And it's not required.
It's not required, yeah, it isn't required. And you could go somewhere else and it's free. I just think there's a lot more benefit. I understand that it's hard for parents, you know, when you work, but then perhaps this isn't the preschool opportunity for the parents then. Oh, it was offered?
Years ago.
You know. So, you know, the gentleman who was here even spoke, talked about, you know, charging a fee even. So I can definitely look at what it would cost to have NBT. We also could look at a, you know, a third party provider, if there was transportation, you know, as, if it wasn't transportation home, that may be on the individual parent. If there were daycare centers in town or where the student was going, maybe that individual daycare would pay the cost to have the student transported. Then obviously, the daycare is on the parent. I just don't know if the board wants to incur additional costs. Because there definitely would be additional costs for this transportation.
I think that's a fair approach, if you can look into what a fee-based service for transportation would be. Because I could see, I see your point. But I also see the point of a parent paying.
Right. And choosing to send their child to school if the opportunity were presented, choosing to send their child to preschool with other students with whom they will go to school. So, so that is a nice opportunity. I could see people being willing to pay for the transportation fee. I don't know how much it will be, so maybe that will make their decision for them. But it's fair, I think, to investigate that and provide the answer.
We'll put something together for the next board meeting and give you an idea what the fee would be.
Does any, does anyone else have any questions or comments? So just to clarify, what you put together would not be going into place in the fall because we wouldn't have time to implement that. There's no, there's no possibility of turning it around that quick, correct?
I don't, I think with role model students already being selected, that puts a whole nother piece. And so typically now, if you're a role model student, you realize you have to provide transportation. So we'd be opening up to additional students because now you're saying there's a transportation option that wasn't before. So I think we should hold, get it in place, and then if that's the case, we need to put that out so that parents are informed properly.
Yes, so I just wanted to be clear around this discussion and then the charge to you. So by getting this information, it would not be effective for next school year because that is not the information that was put out. It's going to be a longer process where the board is going to consider the information that we can take action on it based on what we receive. And then it would go in for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year, if that's the direction of the board. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Thank you. The last item on here is selecting a date for the retreat. So I know we tried to find a date back in April, I believe, and it was really challenging. So there's been certain topics of discussion coming up by other board members. Brian and I have spoken about them. And there's three items that we want to address. The first being the board handbook, that has not undergone any revisions in quite some time. When policy is changed, it does get updated. However, we as a board have not sat down and looked at it to really consider like, is this, you know, where we are and what we believe in, you know, what we stand by in making revisions. So there's that part. The second part is the self-evaluation process that the board engages in. The second part is the self-evaluation process that the board engages in. Last year, I know that we had our self-evaluation, we discussed, we, we received it. And then just based on how our summer meetings go, in time being always a constraint, there wasn't the formal discussion. I did have discussions with board members about it. And so it wasn't forgotten. This is something that does need to be addressed as a board. I think that it is important for us to A, look at the self-evaluation that the board is engaging in annually, but also the process that the board wants to participate in. So we need to come together for that. And then the last discussion that we keep talking about is the utilization of Cabe. Before we decide as a board that this is something we are going to go without, it is important to consider what is offered, what is utilized, what might be better utilized, what is available that we're not aware of. Sorry. And, you know, just the benefits of being part of a professional organization, so on and so forth. I don't think this should be a decision that should be made quickly because it could have long-term impacts on the board. There is research out there that does show that highly effective boards that do lead to student achievement do engage in professional development and take advantage of developing as board members individually and collectively. So I just think that this is something, if it's a decision that's going to be made, it should not be made lightly and we should just exhaust the avenues of having discussion around it. So Brian, would you like to add anything regarding the retreat?
No, I think the three areas of focus are things that need some time. Maybe some of the work could be done in subcommittees and then be finalized at the retreat so the board hall has an impact on them. But the survey, speaking to administrators, you know, they talked about updating the survey with some short answers and some multiple choice and then a comment section. Self-evaluation, self-evaluation. And the handbook was something that was unique towards Berlin, which could use a, I'll say, an update slash facelift, so.
So I don't know if we want to try and look at our calendars now and pick a date or have Debbie send something out. But I know it is very challenging trying to get the 10 of us together outside of the board meeting. Have Debbie send something out, okay. But it is important that we all do participate and we all, you know, so we will have Debbie send something out. And if you have any questions about the agenda items, just ask Brian or myself. And moving on to the last item, unaffiliated administrator contracts and personnel not covered by collective bargaining and evaluation of superintendent of schools. So all three are executive session. We do need a motion to enter executive session.
So.
Are they three separate motions?
No, I think we do one.
Okay, just checking.
I think, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, invite in superintendent to discuss unaffiliated administrators, personnel not covered under collective bargaining and evaluation of superintendent schools.
Do we have a second? So this, at, motion by Adam, second by Jamie. Any discussion? Okay, we can move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, nine, zero, and we are, we are moving into executive session.
We're going to go to the.
Up the room?
No, we're in the same place we want to.
Okay.
That's a good spot.
So we will, we will be adjourning from, from there, so we will not be coming back.
No action is.
No action is taken.